Good afternoon, everyone. As we're getting settled in and allowing folks to enter, I just wanted to share upfront that the mayor will not be able to join us this afternoon. We tried as much good, but uh, we just want to make sure we keep this conversation moving forward and she asked that we, that Dr. Hyman, that Jose Hyman and myself just continue on with the meeting and then she would review the recording and keep up. So we can continue the conversation along. I will say I'm Deidre Anna Freeman, Councilmember Deidre Anna Freeman, joined by my colleague, Dr. Jose Hyman. And there's a number of folks on the screen. I'll let them introduce themselves.
I guess I'll take start. I'm Linwood Cherry with the Association of Realtors in Durham, D R A R. Who's next?
I'll go. I'm Germany McNeil. I'm a Realtor here in Durham. Hello, everyone. Good to see you all.
Thank you. I think Poke is next on my screen.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shontae Poke. As you can see, I am a member of the Neighborhood Stabilization Team within the Community Development Department. I am the coordinator for that team.
And Luke Knight?
Hi, I'm Bram Luke Knight. I'm a builder in town and I'm also here representing the Durham Association of Realtors.
Thank you. And Amber, I think everyone knows who you are.
Hi, I'm Amber Wade, Assistant Mayor.
And Terry Holmes.
Good afternoon. I'm Terry Porter Holmes. I am the Assistant Community Development Department Director.
And Amber, I'm not sure if you're seeing my message. Hold on.
I'm gonna double check to make sure that Reginald is on.
I have not gotten your presentation yet.
Okay, hold on. I'll get to mine. And I hope that that happens quickly. And I see that Kim Rayberg and Donald Tool in our City Attorney's Office have joined us as well. And I know we have a number of attendees. And the background, I will say that following our, I'm sorry, go ahead. And I see City Manager Paige has joined as well. I will say that following our is that our February 23rd work session, there were a number of questions that arise. And we felt as a council, it would be important to create a subcommittee and try to kind of attend to some of that and get some answers to some questions and then also kind of get some feedback from folks. Just acknowledging that there was not enough time in the work session, like work session meeting. As we stretched, I think we stretched it pretty long. And so I am hoping that Amber, you see it now.
Uh, yes, I gotta give me one second.
Okay. And Dr. Hyman, I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to say upfront. You're on mute.
Pardon me. I've been trying to stay on mute because of the congestion. No, just uh, I'm just looking forward to the collaboration for us to just to be able to move forward and make some progress. That's all.
Yes, as I am. Thank you, Amber. I think you can. And as we stated, we made this three meetings and essentially it would be a chance to kind of hear some feedback. So here's the feedback from staff. And then I think the Durham Housing Authority is gonna give some feedback at the next meeting. And then we would also have some time for like an open forum for conversations and questions. And then um, so that would give us those three meetings, trying to squeeze it all in. If you want to go to the next slide, just saying that the subcommittee is made up of the mayor, myself and Councilmember Hyman. And just giving a little bit of background, these conversations around the housing deep dive. I've had a number of presentations throughout this fiscal year, 2022, 23, and you can go to the first section of them. The next slide. And so in October, well, prior to October, September, we had a background retreat of the council. We kind of talked about housing and how it has impact and what uh, what it looks like at the local, state and national level. And out of that, the mayor has made a request for presentations to come to work session. And so in October, we had a presentation of who owns Durham from John Colleen with DataWorks. And what makes a unit affordable and who can benefit from it. A presentation from Reginald Johnson of the Durham Community Development Department. And next slide. And then we moved forward to November where we had a legal framework for affordable housing in North Carolina presented by our City Attorney's Office with Donald Tool and Planning and Development Processes with Sari Young, City of Durham Planning Department. And then in January, we picked back up with an overview of the Durham's homelessness system of care presented by Colin Davis and homelessness systems, Department of Community Development. And then we had a topic discussion about the Durham Housing Authority's organizational structure, governance, funding, types of housing provided by Durham Housing Authority and updates from the downtown. On, I don't know NP, but the pretty much the developments that were happening downtown around the lawn. And that presentation was by Anthony Scott with the Durham Housing Authority. And then we came forward to February. And we had presentations from Legal Aid on the overview of work, of their work on eviction assistance, excuse me, and support programs provided to residents related to housing. And then followed by the City of Durham's Down Payment Assistant Program, ADU Program Staff, staffing at the county and city Housing Authority, Durham Housing Authority's Future Development, area locations per the draft comprehensive, the last slide, but um, essentially the the Durham Association of Realtors kind of a, kind of addressed a whole lot of different areas. And we just felt like it was time to kind of, kind of step back and just look at all of the presentations we've seen so far. And so from October to February, it's about a six month timeframe. It's enough time to kind of just just check back in and make sure that we answer some of those questions that were raised because I know there were some pressing ones. And I am going to, the next up, oh, in March, we had a final, the last presentation was the Development of Water Quality Impacts at Lit Creek, presented by Samantha Crop with the Newt River Keepers Sound Rivers, Inc. So I'm gonna turn it over to staff. Amber, who's up first? I'm looking at the presentation and not the agenda.
So up first is uh, you had a Q and A after the Affordable Housing Deep Dive Presentations and then updates to the City of Durham, homeownership, down payment assistance program from community development.
Okay, so just sharing, just a brief overview of the agenda. We're just, we're gonna have a brief Q and A, just making sure everybody understands what the presentation was, how, how we got to this moment essentially. And then we'll go into the city's home homeownership program and cover the questions that were, and then the voucher program we'll have at the next meeting. So we'll just have that one. And so just, just checking in for questions, if you have them. Looking at the attendees more so than those who are on the screen. If you do have a question, if you want to raise your hand. And if not, we'll continue forward. And I do see former Councilmember Jacqueline Wagstaff has a question and Dee Fred has a question. So, uh, former Councilmember Wagstaff.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My, my question is, and it's real short, it's I see where you have Q and A for all participants. Does that just mean the people that are actually in the Zoom, that's a part of your discussion? Or does that mean the people that are outside of the Zoom, like myself? Would they be a part of the discussion, the Q and A, once these presentations have been made?
Yes, that means the participants, the attendees that are in the session. Okay, and Dee Fred?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good afternoon. Oh, um, quick question. How did he, I mean, I know these, these sessions get put together with questions from this housing group, but how does a community put together a session like this? And that was my question. How do, how do we get to do these type of, other than the council meetings and other than the work sessions? Where we could have, you know, members of different parts of the city come to these community meetings?
My question. In my understanding, if there were a town hall held, that would be the best way to do a community meeting like that?
Okay, so we just request the town hall? Is that, is that the right word for it? Request a town hall meeting?
Essentially, I know that we've done, we've done them in the past with Haytie. And I know for any of the community organizations that host town halls or neighborhood organizations that host the town hall, if you were to invite council members, just noting that if there's more than three of us attending, it has to be an open meeting to the public and it has to be noticed through the clerk's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I don't know if you have another question? Ms. Wagstaff, I notice your hand is still up.
Yes, just a quick question. Could this group, the group that you're on the subcommittee, could y'all convene a meet, a session of this group to include the outside people into a part of this where they could come and share their concerns, like, I think you said y'all have, I don't know how many more of these sessions y'all are gonna have before it comes to a public hearing, but can this subcommittee convene add another meeting to your subcommittee that would include the citizens being able to come and have this same dialogue?
I would say that that would be the third meeting of this, of one of three. And so the next meeting will be in April. And Amber, you have to give me a specific date, but and that'll be 1:30 to 2:30 and the following meeting will be in May. If that helps. So there'll be one this month, one next month, and then a third one in May. And that third one will be a more open dialogue, like the open discussion for the last 30 minutes of this today. Try to keep it as orderly as we can, one person at a time. And try to limit, like, limit so that we can get as many, as much feedback as possible.
Those meetings are Thursday, April 13th at 1:00 PM and Thursday, May 11th at 1:00 PM.
Okay, at 1:00 PM, my apologies. So Thursday, April 13th and Thursday, May 11th. And I see Ms. Yvette Carpenter raised her hand. Oh, we lost, we lost. If she comes back in, we'll just.
Hello, can you hear me?
There you are.
Okay, that was my main question because I couldn't talk and I couldn't, I couldn't do anything. So I just wanted to make sure I was able to, to see what you guys were seeing. So I'm good now. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm gonna turn it over to Reginald. Is it Reginald Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Reginald. And just sharing a brief update, five to seven minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Hold on, just I'm going to, uh, there it is. This is our, so greetings, everyone.
And I apologize, you have, you have about 14 minutes, I will say, Reginald. I didn't, I didn't account for Mr. Scott not being here or the Durham Housing Authority not being here, but you have 14 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Reginald Johnson, Director, Department of Community Development. Pleased to be here. I'm joined by Mike, Dr. Michael Pullum, who is the Neighborhood Stabilization Team Manager, Eric Boyd, and Terry Porter Holmes and Shontae Poke, who is also on the Community Development Staff. My purpose here is to just provide an update on the Down Payment Assistance Program. The team that I just mentioned to you works on the program. And as I shared during the council meeting, there were some things we were still discussing and working through with the program, but I'll talk about that as we can do, as we share this presentation. Next slide. The current DPA program, Down Payment Assistance Program, the City of Durham's Down Payment Assistance Program helps the first time home buyers who are low to moderate income individuals and families at or below 80% of the area median income. For a family of four in Durham, that's a household income of about $76,400 a year as of this, as of right now. The selected home must be located within the City of Durham and used as the borrower's primary residence. The Down Payment Assistance will be provided as an interest-free forgivable loan with a 20-year term. The City of Durham contacted the City of Raleigh, Greensboro and Charlotte to compare program guidelines. Based upon our findings, the DPA guidelines need to be revised to make the program successful. And to date, no loans have been processed under the current program. The subsidy amount is $20,000. Subsidies can be layered. For example, with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency First Time Home Buyer Program, the debt to income ratio is 43% for the DPA program. Community Home Trust has been selected as the DPA program administrator. And the current DPO program is in need of an underwriter and CHT, the Community Home Trust has submitted a proposal that we are reviewing for underwriting services. To date, a total of 1,337 loan applications for the DPA program have been received and reviewed by Community Home Trust. Due to time limitations, that was in March, I should say, of 2022. Due to time limitations, all the applications received have expired. All the applicants will be notified of their current status and informed on how to reapply to participate in the relaunch of the city's DPA program. They won't be applying to CHT. They will be applying to a first mortgage directly and not the administrator. The first Lenders Workshop was held with, by CHT and the City of Durham on December the 5th, 2022, to distribute the DPA program guidelines and to answer questions about the, the program. And the second Lenders Workshop is scheduled for March 23rd, 2023, to provide lenders with an update on the DPA program. I would also say in the first Lenders Workshop, there were comments provided that were very helpful in the program and one of the reasons that we were sought to consult with others outside of the City of Durham. But the second Lenders Workshop is scheduled for March 23rd to provide lenders with an update on the DPA program. DPA program launch, once the revised DPA programs guidelines are approved and the relevant contracts executed, the DPA program will relaunch. We do anticipate that provided the approvals to happen this spring, I would say. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I will first go to Germany McNeil.
Okay, um, for CHT, are they, they're trying to be able to underwrite the, the money? Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. That is correct.
And how long will it be before they hear back about that? How long will that process take?
One of the things that we need to do after we review their proposal is that we need to examine their contract and relook at their contract. Most likely, we'll consider having to make an amendment to the current contract. So that involves going before the city council.
Okay. So realistically, you think it'll be three more months before anybody can utilize the program or?
I would say today, this is March, I was saying in our presentation, later this spring, maybe two to three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil. And Ms. Carpenter?
Um, yes, hi. Um, so I think the, so has the city given any thoughts to increasing the assistance? So I don't see where, what's in this that gives your recommendations on how to improve the, the program to make it more relevant to today's market conditions? And the other thing is, how will you, as the director, given that you had 1,100 or so, 1,100 or so applicants try to instill confidence in the program going forward? Like, I mean, it seems like to me that once it's up and running, it needs to flow like, you know, very much like clockwork so that the community feels that what happened in the past won't repeat itself. So how, what assurances do we have as lenders out here in the community when we offer this program to our clients? What assurances do we have from you and your department that we will not experience the exact same thing?
Well, you asked several questions, so I would say that in the, in terms of the confidence, one of the things that we do do and CHT has done is main contact with the borrowers that have applied now. And so they're actually in contact with them every month. Many of those are still working on submitting information. So the contact is, is, is there. In terms of the revisions to the program, we are and have contemplated revising the guidelines. That will be part of the approval process that we need to go through with the council and make sure that we have the underwriting provisions approved. But we are sensitive to increasing the amount. There's no question about that based upon the where we are in the community, where borrowers are, where the market is, that we will increase the amount of, of the resources available.
And when you reached out to the City of Greensboro, City of Raleigh, I know I sent some information over from the City of Greensboro where they're able to go above the area median income of 80% based on certain criteria. Has, have you considered any of that in your analysis? And the final question would be, if it's, if it's gonna take another two to three months to roll this out, we're, we're missing spring market. And, you know, home buyers really need the help, like, as soon as they can get it. I mean, they, they just really do. And so, you know, they're gonna miss, they're, you know, they're gonna miss that, that piece of the market where it's where they can really compete, especially with having the assistance program. So, I mean, I just want to be able to, to give the buyers help where they most need it, basically.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate those suggestions. One of the things is that when we talk with the City of Greensboro, that's a point that we have to analyze and have some more conversation about because we follow the HUD guidelines, US Department of Housing and Urban Development, while all of our programs across the board in terms of the AMI level, and we're very consistent in that. And so that's something that we have to be very concerned, particularly when we use federal funds, if we elect to use federal funds. But I think that the other factors that, that you have shared are good, good points.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Dr. Hyman. I know, Ms. McNeil, you asked a few questions already, if you don't mind.
Yeah, my question is just for clarity. Mr. Johnson, how are you this afternoon?
Well, doing well, Councilmember. Always good to see you.
Good to see you. So I think you said something about the list of people who are already applied and then you would go back and get to that list because the lists have expired. Is that, is that, am I, did I get?
Yes, and what we're saying, that was in March of 2022. This is a year later in terms of the lending process and the information that they were provided.
Okay.
Right, and not all of those, one, one of the most important points is overwhelming and we're talking about any 90% of those who, the number that I just said, have not provided all of their information. And so their application can proceed. That's the most important thing.
Okay, so do you know, and I know I might be pinpointing, but do, do you know how many of those applications have a completed application so that if you have to reach back out to them, like, I'm just trying to eliminate barriers to process again for them because that's a lot to have to get paperwork and this. I've been through homeownership. That was exactly.
Yes, so the number of persons who have completed their application is 76 for approval to continue in the process.
And then you'll be reaching out to that, those 76 people to kind of say?
Absolutely.
And, and, and again, I, I know that you, because I, I know you, you're gonna try to eliminate some of the barriers so that they, I guess, all the paperwork, they would have to get together again and update so that it would be more of a streamlined, very much following guidelines, but a streamlined process. I'm just trying to eliminate the barriers.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it is a lot to get all that paperwork again, again, together, which I know you do need updated stuff, especially when you're applying for mortgages, but just trying to make sure we could, you know, just eliminate the barriers we have.
And council and home and housing council is a part of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And then back to Ms. McNeil.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that I know he's saying that 76 out of 1,300 people turned in, you know, completed paperwork, but paperwork was only good for six months. So people that applied were asked several times over the last year to resubmit paperwork. So I don't, I don't know that that number is completely accurate. But I wanted to know, on, on March 23rd, you said you're having a follow-up lender meeting. Is that to tell them that you're working on items because we're still not able to, to roll the program out? That's my first question. And then my second question is, is there any way that we can work together to expedite this? Because this program has been in existence for a year with no one closing. And now we're, you know, we're missing out on the spring market and we have no date in sight on when citizens will be able to utilize this program. And I'm totally with Yvette on. It's very discouraging, especially to people that feel that they couldn't buy a home or they're first time home buyers and to go through this process. And now they're going to not have to apply through CHT, but they're gonna have to go through a completely different process than they did prior to.
So I would say, you know, it is unfortunate that the market, the spring market is upcoming and we don't have the program ready. There's no, there's no question about that. You know, can we expedite it? There are some processes that we have to make sure that. There are some processes that we have to make sure that are in place, you know, when we're talking about, uh, you know, changing the guidelines. When we're talking about, um. Making sure that the uh, contract uh, with C H T is reflective of the, um. You know, the underwriting that's needed, which is not in the original contract, that is, that is a process, it's a fundamental process. Uh, you know, nothing can, you know, change that, uh, but we are looking to ways to be able to expedite. That under, under the guidelines that we have for council approval, but that uh, has to go through a process nonetheless. Uh, you know, and so, you know, here we are at March, uh, mid-March, um, you know, I'm not able to give. Timetables uh, just yet, but we do are clear on the tasks that need to be done, and what those tasks normally uh, take. And so we uh, we are on our way.
And the March twenty-third meeting, what, what exactly is, is that for?
Oh, the March twenty, uh, twenty-third meeting is to talk with uh, lenders, uh, we do have. To give, uh, to give an update uh, where we are, uh, as you know, the lenders will be playing a major role. Uh, from where the program was originally, uh, um, constructed. And we also gonna need partners, you know, from the lending community to be able to uh, operate the second program, that's what we'll be talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I noticed that Ms. Carpenter and Dr. Hyman, you still have your hands up, I'm just checking to make sure you don't have a question. If not, I, I did have one question, Reginald, is there any, anything that would prohibit a loan purchase program? So specifically for those seventy-six homeowners, um, or property or potential. Loans that could have been made, if they all, if they all, or some were able to. Uh, find a lender and move forward, is there a way that the city could participate in their loans? Um, through a loan purchase?
I'm not sure that, uh, council member to answer right on the spot, the uh, first lender would be a, a, a driver in that. So, th- th- I'll have to leave that one open for right now.
And I would say that it'd probably be a good idea to ask when you're talking to the partners, if they'd be interested in something like that for Durham residents.
Right, I mean, our purpose, what I do know is the, the, the program that we have is for homeownership, and so. Uh, one of the end products needs to be that the person does own the home and does not at risk of losing the home. But, uh, uh, that's about as much as I can say right now.
Thank you. And I am just turning, I was, I was wondering, so for the part for attendees to ask questions. Amber, did you wanna turn on the chat, or?
So, the, the chat is on, if attendees wanna ask a question, they can raise their hand, and I can promote them over and allow them to talk.
Okay. And I see, um, Dee Fred had a question, or hand raised, and then Sheri Zan Rosenthal has her hand raised.
Yes, getting, getting, getting back to Mr. Johnson, the delay. Um, I know it's a great undertaking with the paperwork that goes and getting this in a timely fashion, I know people who actually apply with the North Carolina. Housing Finance back, um, early in the late twenty twenty-one, and they're still just getting around to the paperwork. In twenty twenty-three, and like you said, they do call and apologize, they've been backlogged, but it doesn't help people who are sitting. Waiting to get into a home or to prevent them from losing a home, so my question is. And what kind of other partners could help in facilitate that? Because it is a great sense of urgency with the housing crisis the way it is. Especially with those with the income levels that we are talking about, that was my question.
Uh, no, I think that's a good question, and what I would say, uh, the key partners in the. Uh, now in the program are the lenders. Uh, when we constructed our program, it wasn't constructed on that foundation, and we have to go back and change it. And so that's one of the things, the main thing that we're going back to, uh, working on a change, and it takes us. Uh, some time to be able to change it, we're sensitive to the urgency uh, of that, uh, like I said, you know, the team here. Uh, won't be necessarily processing applications, which is different from what we did the last time. When I say the last time, when we had, you know, had a second mortgage program, it, it ran totally diff- totally different. From the way we uh, need to run these programs now, and that's one of the things that'll be candid that we will call in. But we, uh, we'll get it straight.
Thank you, and, uh, I'm just checking, Ms. Carpenter, did you have another question?
Um, yes, and I would, I would ask that, um, as, as you are working on the mechanics of the program and how to. Expedite the process that we layer in accounting, we layer in all those parties that it takes to. To get the, the uh, buyers through the process, because I know the last uh, call that we had prior to when we. Met at City Hall, we didn't know at that time, like, how fast we would be able to get a check. We, I mean, there were a lot of unknowns as it related to just getting the money. And I would ask from staff and from the administrator that we layer all those parties in. To make sure, because we have, you know, as a lender, we have to move, we can't be waiting on the, the check, you know, especially if you've got a contract where. Um, the seller wants to close, it's a back-to-back closing, you know, so we just have to be firing on all cylinders. As a, you know, once we get to that point, that's, that would be my ask as well.
Thank you, no, that's a good ask, and I actually agree, and we also, and I've been in conversations with attorneys. Uh, to be able to figure out a way to, to, to handle that and have funds uh, on the ready. And so, no, you make a good point, and yes, we have, uh, I think we figured out a way to, to resolve that.
Thank you, and I, I think that was kind of where my question was coming in around, trying to see if there's some. I don't know, mechanism for a post-loan support as well, so that there's not just that hold in between. But, um, I'm gonna go to Ms. Sheri Zan Rosenthal, and then we're gonna come back to Ms. Germany McNeil.
Well, good afternoon, y'all, um. Uh, first I want to say that at least on my screen, the chat is disabled. And that might be a great way for those of us who, uh, wanna ask a question, do so without being disruptive to y'all's process, if that could be enabled. Um, I also wanna ask Reginald, you know, under the capable leadership of Juanita Massenberg. We had this kind of home lending programs, we had various programs, including down payment. Uh, teacher firefighter and, uh, uh, police officers, uh, loans, we had a number of different. Home loan programs that, uh, went along for many years, then at a different point, we. Uh, switched to an outside contractor to manage that portfolio. But I wanna understand, there's a missing piece for me, if everybody else understands it, then talk to me offline. About what is the difference, why did we need to shut this program down, I'm a little shocked to hear that it was completely shut down. Instead of being revised in the background while it kept on, um, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheri, it's good to, uh, hear from you, I would say the major point in, in this is that. The federal regulations changed on how these programs are to be conducted. Uh, so one of the things that people in, in past iterations applied to us, and we work with our, our partner and. The, the, just the whole entire construct, uh, under federal regulations have changed, where we don't do. Uh, and our role is not what it used to be, uh, and the role that we have. Uh, is reliant on the first, first mortgager, and then the loan comes to us, which was not. And, and we have to underwrite our portion, that's not the way it was at all, uh, in all of those years that you speak, speak about. And so one of the things that I was sharing, as I said earlier, when we went out to, uh, to get our portfolio, we weren't. Uh, uh, candidly, it wasn't reflective of the federal regulations as it should be, uh, and so that's one of the things that's changing, it's a major change.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil.
Um, okay, um, I, I have a real concern about the timing, just because it's been a year, and, um. I, I wanted to know, uh, with C H T, if they were capable of doing the underwriting, I just wonder why that wasn't explored in November. When we, of last year, when we first discovered that we did not have anybody to underwrite the funds, cause it, it just seems like. Things aren't moving as quickly as they possibly could, from, from my standpoint.
Well, I would also. I see that the manager has come on, so I'll defer to.
So, so good afternoon, I'm Wanda Page of the Durham City Manager, uh, I have been listening in on the meeting, and. I wanted to make a few brief remarks around the underwriting. Uh, I certainly understand exactly what underwriting is and how important it is, it is just one of the complications of getting. A loan completed, and I think what we're trying to do, um, and, and I certainly, um, you know, acknowledge that. Many people would have been benefited if they could have participated in this, in this loan program up until now. Doesn't mean that they are not gonna benefit in the future, because I do believe that with changes to the program. And I appreciate people bringing those, um, you know, those other programs, those ideas to us. That there will be people that actually benefit, but I do wanna go on record to say, there are many complications, there are market complications. Price-point complications, many complications around, uh, uh, other than just underwriting. And, and, and so I did want to emphasize that point, because if it was just underwriting, that would be something that. Is very, very easy to, easy to obtain.
Thank you, Manager Page. Just checking if anyone wanted to add anything else, or. We're trying to talk about with an open, well, how an open discussion could be framed around this. Um, and then not just limited to the second, uh, to the second mortgage or the, um, down payment assistance. But largely, how, all of this conversation is really around building homeownership, building, um. Kind of equitable development, like, trying to make sure there's access to housing, and so I do wanna make sure we do expand the conversation a little bit further, we have a chance to do that. And I see Yvette, you have, Yvette Carpenter has her hand up. You're on mute, if you're speaking, you're.
Yeah, I would just like to make one quick comment, is that, um. And certainly, I, this is not intended at any one person, but, you know, the citizens and voted on this money. And we, you know, I would imagine that all of us probably on this call, own a home. And know the importance of, of owning a home, and how that can help your communities. And how that can help your family, and how that can instill a pride of ownership, and what that can do for our, for the children. And I would just hope that we would all under- understand and take, um, a passion and have a sense of urgency. In allowing this underserved community to be able to achieve this, we cannot. Afford to not get this right this time, this go-around, so that we can help some worthy individuals. Who have worked tirelessly and hard to be able to get into a home, and I would just hope that we would have. A sense of urgency to do that, and I'm sorry if I come across as very passionate, but I am, but I know what it's like to own a home, and. And there's just a community that, that's underserved out there that we need to, to, to try to help as much as we can.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, I think you summed up while we're having this call and. Having the conversation, just acknowledging like it was a missed opportunity, and wanna figure out how to do, uh, do more. With what we have, and, um, I, I appreciate Manager Page just pointing out, like, this is. This is a real, like, situation, and there's more than underwriting involved in this. And I think it'll be great to include some of those ideas, and it'd also be great to include some of the folks, I think you mentioned, um. Have layering in, like, accounting and buyer processes in, into this. It looks like my internet, I'm having some internet trouble, can you still hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, just noting, like, there's, there's support from our community, especially, um, just acknowledging how the Durham Realty Association has. Been pouring in on this topic specifically, but I know there's other areas that, um, are of interest, and making sure that there's a connection between. Some of our paraprofessionals, our professionals, and community members to our staff, and making sure that they're a resource. Acknowledging that there, there could be more, uh, process-related questions asked before the program's developed. Or implemented, that might help, and if not, you know, it doesn't, but. I, I, I appreciate all of those comments, and I just wanna make sure, so Ms. Carpenter, did you have another question or comment?
I am so sorry, I forget to lower my.
Just making sure, and if not, then I'm gonna ask if there's anyone else on the call, specifically the panelists. Who wanted to share an insight, I know we are not gonna get to the housing authority aspect of this conversation. But I know there were a lot of num- a number of questions raised. Um. And I'm looking, I'm trying to look at all my notes, if not all of those questions around the area median income, and I know he's taken back a lot of. And the underwriter, the scorecard I have, the guidelines and exceptions. And I don't know, um, Mr. Johnson, if you wanted to share what those federal regulations are, so the folks can get. Up to speed on, on exactly what's changed, so that they're not just speaking from, you know, past regulations. Just making sure everyone's on the same page. You're on mute if you're trying to talk to us.
Let me confer just a moment.
Okay. And I do wanna appreciate everyone being on the call, and I didn't say that upfront, I know that everyone has a busy schedule. And can be doing eleven to twelve other things right now, so I just wanna thank you all for being here.
Okay, so, uh, I would, I would say the regulations, uh, uh, the HUD, uh, CFR four thousand point eleven. Most of the folks who are all, already, uh, familiar with that, uh, know about that, then I would also say, uh, the Dodd-Frank. Uh, uh, bill that was passed, as well as the requirements of, of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac.
Thank you. And as we shift to a conversation or more open discussion, I do wanna give. Um, folks on the panelists a first shot at maybe posing any questions or statements or comments. And if not, then I'm gonna turn it over to attendees and look for hands raised. I see Mr. Luke Knight, and then I have Ms. Wagstaff and Dee Fred.
Uh, thank you for recognizing me, um, I just wanted to take a quick second and, um, and talk about. The proposed simplifying choices for affordable development proposal that, that the council is considering, and preface it by saying that I have nothing to do with it. I've not been involved in the development of it, but just as a, as a housing creator in our town, and looking. Um, looking at some of the changes that are proposed, uh, I would encourage everybody to really take the time to. To read the proposed changes and understand them, and recognize how they can help folks. Like myself, that are, that are local housing creators, and help people that live and work in our town, be able to obtain. Housing, um, in Durham.
Thank you. Ms. Wagstaff.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, just a quick, uh, quick.
Okay, just a quick uh quick question to Reginald. And I was listening to all of this and I'm glad Ms. Carpenter and Ms. McNeil, I feel your passion about housing and. You know, the most marginalized community that's not afforded to be in this, but. I had some concerns about when I heard Reginald and it's complex, I know this is complex, but when I heard you say that one of the qualifiers. For the meat to be able to qualify with these seventy eight applications that you have right now that have to reapply. Is the medium income has to be at least seventy eight thousand dollars? I'm really concerned about that because that is. Put in a lot of the marginalized people in the, we will never own a home in Durham category. Because that that I wanna know what is the medium income in Durham and. How many people would actually be able to qualify even what if you lowered it right now with the interest rates being so high a year ago. The interest rate for one thing, but the interest rates are much higher now, so. The people that are among those seventy eight applications that you have that y'all are reevaluating. They may not even be able to apply, be able to qualify at this point and please keep us informed on. How many of those seventy eight people actually have made it through all of the processes to become actual homeowners, I would. Definitely like to see that number and see if all seventy eight applications and probably more. Can actually qualify and be a part of this program, but that's seventy eight thousand dollars. It's a lot when I know that there are a lot of people that work hard every day and don't even make thirty thousand dollars, starting with police officers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Ms. Wagstaff, so let me clarify what I shared with you. Uh, and I'll uh also answer the questions I was saying that the top household income. Is eighty percent AMI, which for a family affords about seventy six thousand four hundred dollars. So that's a top in top household income, not a minimum. Okay, and so that that's what I was saying and that's uh all of our HUD programs, renting, uh owning. Uh, all of all of the all programs. Now, in terms of you asked a question, what is the median income in Durham, uh I'm doing this by memory. But I think the median income for Durham is right at uh just under a hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, that's not, that that's not set by us, that is uh using the uh Census Bureau information that's federally set. Uh, and so the area median income, when we talk about area median income, uh the seventy six thousand is basically eighty percent of that. That's roughly how you come to that uh calculation, that is set by the Census Bureau. Uh, based upon the data that they collect and HUD uh follows that uh that that information, it is changed annually. Uh, based upon the 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 information that is uh collected, that's where we get our rating scales, usually they come out in April. Uh, of every year and we have to follow our um that that income limit. For that year to the ensuing year, so I hope that helps and shares a little light on what I was sharing. Oh, the other part that I wanted to share was that the area uh when we talk about area median income for Durham does include Durham and Orange County. Uh, that's not said by us, that is federally set. Uh, and it is weighted because we in terms of income, because Durham has more population, but of course, as you know, it's. Uh, Orange County in Chapel Hill has a higher income, but they have fewer people, but it is the area income we used to be in with. With Raleigh, Wake County, uh but that was divided up, that again, that's a federal decision, not a locality, local decision. So I hope that's the light.
Thank you, Reginald, uh Johnson, I I was just gonna add to that and just acknowledging that the. I I hear what the overarching comment is and recognizing that people who don't who make seventy six thousand. Um, would qualify for this, or seventy six thousand or lower would qualify for this program. And I'm hearing from some of the real estate professionals that that may not meet with the area median. Income or area median housing cost is, and so I'm not sure how much you need to make to come. To qualify for a loan of a three hundred, I'm not sure if it's even three hundred anymore, if it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Home is the average price, then what should the, I guess the average income be for that? And I'm looking at the real estate professionals to say, yeah, I mean, if you're process, if you're in the process of processing some of these loans, what's the. The guidelines look like around, you know, qualifying for a three hundred fifty thousand dollar home?
If you give me a second, I can make those calculations for you.
Thank you.
I think Yvette would probably be.
She'd be better at it if she's ready.
Yeah, if she's still on.
I don't know if we lost her. Yeah, I think we lost Yvette. Because I think that that's kind of where we we lose. If we're not figuring that kind of math out on the front end. And setting up a program where people, where folks can't even qual- like their averages aren't even aligned enough to purchase.
Yeah, and then their debts are also taken into accountability, so even if they have the income, that debt to income ratio as Reggie spoke on, it still has to meet that. Forty-three percent.
That's really high.
Yeah, that's why we were pushing for hoping that we will be able to um. Increase the amount that's considered for child support income because it's not taxable. And um being able to count the income received from the mortgage credit certificate administered by North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Um, because if if we can get the program working, we can lump it with other programs in order to help those that. Make below the area median income to be able to qualify and afford something.
Yeah.
Think Yvette is back too.
I I'm so sorry, I had an underwriter on the phone, um I would add that North Carolina housing has went to a forty-five percent back end ratio. On their uh funds and they um so I think that that would. You know, the two percent would would make the difference, so I would really uh ask staff to really look at that, that additional two percent.
And they had a question, Yvette, about um how much would someone need to make to qualify for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan?
Well, whatever the averages of Durham, like of the Durham community, what's the average home price? In comparison to the average or the area median income?
Well, well, the average home price is probably gonna be at least three hundred K, I mean, I would think in Durham. And at three hundred K. I mean, you probably with taxes, insurance, everything included, you're probably, and given the fact that interest rates have continued to increase. You're you're easily talking probably about, let's see. Based on those guidelines, I mean, my goodness, you're talking about an eighty-two thousand dollar uh salary if we. If if we adhere to a thirty-two percent housing ratio and a forty-three percent total debt ratio. Because the guideline, the way they're written right now says thirty-two percent of their income. It can't exceed that for their house payment, so I mean, they would easily. Have to make about eighty-two thousand dollars just to qualify for three hundred thousand, I mean, and. If we have any other people on the on the call, but I mean, I I'm pretty much, that's where the numbers shake out.
Thank you. And to the Manager Page.
I thank you for the recognition and thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for for highlighting that. Um, it goes back to uh the comments I made earlier about the complexity of being able. To get all the pieces in place in the side, the city of Durham in order to make successful loans, we are not. We are not saying that none could have been made, what we are now saying is we gotta dig deeper. To figure this out, to make sure that as we go forward, we're we're just about midway forever home Durham. And we have resources that are allocated in order to assist residents in the city of Durham be able to be homeowners. And we have to make sure that when we set up these new program guidelines, first of all, that the. That the resident is going to be able to qualify for a first mortgage. So whatever we put in our second mortgage program uh requirements, if they are more lenient. Than the first mortgage, then we still are gonna gonna have a gulf. So we, as it relates to income and other kinds of uh, you know, other kinds of things, so we we are, we we clearly hear. The stakeholders, we clearly hear the lenders, we we clearly hear the folks who are producing housing, we need to be a team. And make sure that some of our residents here can actually close on these laws and put their key in the door. And open it to their own home here inside the city limits of Durham, and I am committed. Among many, many priorities, but I am committed that this happens in our community and I appreciate. Um, I appreciate your advocacy for homeowners because we need. We need homeowners as well as, you know, other places for folks to live, but we we definitely have. Uh, a commitment to make make additional home ownership opportunities for our residents, we've committed to it. Uh, in our forever home Durham program, as the director has said here, uh but we're just committed to it previously, I heard a pre uh. Share Zan Rosenthal talk about how it's been a priority in this uh community in the past. You know, we don't make all of the external rules, but we can, we can, we can mold to them. Still making sure that we have some successes, so I'm committed to that for this community.
If I could add one thing, is that maybe the approach should be. Like I know that Wake County has went to, they have one program that provides up to sixty thousand dollars, right? So maybe you, you know, if you give twenty, then you you're spreading yourself out so. So then that maybe, maybe the person, yes, you could serve twenty, but you'd probably be able to help a whole lot. Given where the purchase price is, if you bump up that, you may not be able to serve as many households. But you will be able to help the ones that would qualify without more of the assistance, you'd be able to get them. In there, right? Because, I mean, granted, the person who was making thirty-five thousand, that's the CNA due. Given where our market is, they may not be able to qualify for a house, I mean. That's kind of like the reality of things based on where the income is, but the person who is making forty-eight. And they get more assistance might be able to benefit and you might have more of those people that would benefit. Than just giving the twenty and nobody can can find anything because they can't get into the price point that they need to be, so. Maybe just thinking about it from a coming at from a different angle might be something else to look at as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that and I think we have a few attendees also trying to chime in with comments and. I I really do wanna make sure that I do appreciate um. The conversation and the 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 context of how all of this, I don't wanna frame it like there's a, there's not. Um, ingenuity in the program and that, you know, we won't come up with a way to make sure that that is covered. But I do wanna hear if there's anything new that we haven't heard or anything um to add to this conversation. Um, from some of our residents and folks in the community. And so I had a Dee Fred, a Mimi Kessler and a Benita Green, um and in that order. If you could share your questions and maybe we can get some or statements as briefly as possible, we could probably get some more conversation going. I think Mimi Kessler.
Okay, hi, this is Mimi Kessler, um, I uh I wanted to respond about the uh SCAD. Um, uh position that was expressed earlier, um. I was part of the INC uh group that went through this um. Text amendment proposal uh very carefully and. It is uh difficult to read because if you don't have a fair amount of understanding about building codes. Uh, it's kind of Greek, we did have a subject matter expert to advise us on what the meaning was. And uh so it isn't, it isn't as easy as it sounds to just read it and understand it. There are a number of things that um are good about it, um there are other things that we feel. Um, we would like to have more discussion prior to the uh adoption of anything. That's contained in it, for example, parking, uh having no parking requirement. For any kind of building in any area of Durham County is not practical. In two thousand thirteen, and so we believe that we can work to reduce the parking requirements. But having zero parking required in every building in every part of Durham is just not workable. And that is part of the the program, we also feel as though they have gutted the infill standards that. Um, we worked hard to. Um, to preserve when E H C went through in uh two thousand nineteen. And in fact, the planning director at that time, granted, he's not the planning director now, uh but he um. Promised that the infill standards would um. Help Durham stay Durham in terms of how it looks and feels. And there is every provision in there for uh developers to game the system where they um. Collect individual lots and ostensibly they're building. One develop, one dwelling of some kind on each lot, but in fact, they're all strung together. And so it's a way for them to get around any kind of subdivision. Rulings and and oversight. Um, and. The combination of those three things are part of the reason that that we drew the conclusion that it was. Uh, not good for Durham, uh it is also not written well, there are incomplete sentences and. Uh, things that are completely not understandable even to uh even to a um subject matter expert. So it it's it's really a lot more complicated um than any given three minute speech can give. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, Ms. Kessler, I will say, I appreciate um the comments, um. I know that as a council, we've we've made the decision to hold a separate meeting to have that kind of conversation. Because it is clear that there's still not a consensus around where we are, and so I know that that will come forward. At some, at a later date, that is not uh part of this, these three meetings. I I know that there's a lot of positives and negatives on both sides. And I look forward to that full dialogue in context with staff from planning being involved. Rather than community development, and so um I think for the most part, we have our city attorneys and community development on this call, I would ask. Folks to try and get in as much uh questions or comments as they can around the community development uh programs. And uh let's save the conversation for uh. Uh, and uh for the the text amendments for that conversation, cuz we will have it, we, it's not, it's not gonna not happen, I will say that. So we will have that conversation and try to get as much feedback as we can in it as as well, so. Thank you. And Dee Fred and.
Yes, um, quick question as far as community development, um, getting to the program, um. The program itself, the qualifiers, and out of the first round, there were people. Over eleven hundred applications and only a few of them sent in paperwork that was. Can enable them to go through the whole process, even though this program will change. My question is, I think we need to do an intense job of making citizens aware of what. Qualify paperwork you need beforehand, because a lot of times you go into the first home bias program. And there's some credit issues you need to address, there's a lot of behind the scenes thing that hadn't been looked at before. That especially coming out of a post-COVID where everybody's jobs was thrown up in the air. I think there needs to be more public education on this, so that when you go through the application. You understand some things you might not have looked at five years ago, you need to look at now and what things and challenges that might ensue. I know it's done at the first time home bias program, but I think we need to do that more intensely beforehand. And have little sessions and more on the ground programs to address that. And have little sessions and more on the ground programs to address that. That was my question.
Thank you, uh, D Fred. I did want to, to state that I agree completely. I would say that it's probably gonna be more of a community conversation. Because it's not just on like a second loan, it's on a first loan. And so maybe that whomever, um, community development is coming up with as partners. Maybe it's asking them to host some conversations so that they're letting you know what their. Um, first time homeowners or whatever their mortgage underwriting looks like. Because all of that's gonna tie together. It's not limited to the city's version. And I think that's what, what manager Paige was trying to point out. It's not. And Red, and Mr. Johnson was trying to point out is it's not limited to. How you get a mortgage is not limited to the city process. We can't just make up a version that's gonna work. It's actually got to work with the first mortgage. And so this becomes the second mortgage. And so that'll be helpful. Um, maybe in those conversations with the partners to see if they're already hosting meetings or they're having home buyer sessions. And maybe we can make them bigger or share them out, you know, through our platform. In a way that makes it available to more residents in our city and our community. So that they can qualify because I do appreciate what you're bringing up is that a lot of folks don't know what it takes to qualify for a mortgage. And Ms. Green, Ms. Benita Green.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. I actually want to, my comments are based on like the median income. And I understand that there are federal guidelines and that we're kind of lumped in with Chapel Hill. But overall, I mean, you, you know, if you, you break it down into classifications by race. Um, what you'll find is that whites are significantly above the county level. In Durham as far as the median income level and then all other, uh, race groups are well below that. So I don't know. You know, if there's a way that. Those guidelines can be. You know, well, this can be taken into consideration with Durham because it would really help more people. The way that it is right now, it puts more limitations on people. You know, we're not really considering the group that's being impacted the most, um, the way the. The guidelines are set right now because it's based on overall, overall, and it's not based on, you know, um. Race or really true economic status and that who's gonna, who needs this and who's gonna benefit from it. So those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. And I would, I would love to, to pose that to our city attorneys. They may not be able to answer today or right now. But I think it's important to figure out what, I guess, the legislation or the, uh, federal guidelines. That would prevent us from actually like being clear or stating. That we would want this to be more of a people of color focused, you know, like that. Some way to put levers in place to say that it's people of color focused. Um, acknowledging the harms of the past and so, so forth and so on. I think that our racial equity task force. Um, did a good job of spelling out some of that and maybe there's an opportunity to. To formulate some of that in the program itself so that it does reach some of the population, some of those guidelines. Where there's exceptions, like all of that is in place or can be in play. If we know exactly what those laws that are on the book, that kind of prevent us from doing or saying anything around that.
Hi, Councilmember Freeman. Good afternoon, everyone. Kim Rayberg from the City Attorney's Office. Councilmember Freeman, as you acknowledged, we, we cannot answer that on the spot. Uh, that's a very complicated issue. Uh, but we will get to researching that right now, um. At first blush, I, I would say, uh, that it might be more difficult. To tease that out than we anticipate, but we will research the issue for certain.
Thank you. And, and if it's, if it's not enough time by the next meeting, which is in April. Uh, we have one in May, so I just, I just, I do think it'll be helpful though.
We will get back to you at one of those two meetings. And there is a third attorney who, um. Uh, Senior Assistant City Attorney Aaron Miles is actually the General Counsel for Community Development. And she works closely with them on these affordable housing issues. She would have, she would be better versed. What's out there, what's happening on that front? Um, so we'll make sure she's at the next meeting in April. And, uh, we should have research together by April thirteenth, I would, I would suspect.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And Robin Barefoot.
Hey, this is Robin. Can you hear me?
Yes, like we can hear you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Freeman. Thank you so much for, um, recognizing, my hand is up. Um, I live in North Durham and have lived in Durham for forty years. Um. I am, uh, an employee at Foundation for the Carolinas, which is a community foundation in Charlotte. But I was for about fourteen years, General Counsel at, uh, Triangle Community Foundation out in the Research Triangle Park most recently. Um, I'm, I'm raising my hand because I, I want to just, um, put into the, into the room. Um, a different, a question and a different model, um, that I don't know whether, um, it, it could be explored. Um, I'm not an expert on the matters that you all have been discussing. It was an education to be hearing them so far. But, um, my question is, I'm hearing that eighty percent AMI is kind of the. Um, the, the toggle point for the loan program that, um, Mr. Johnson had described. Um, I wanted to share that, um, in Charlotte, um, they have been affecting an affordable housing program. That has been, um, handled, um, through the development community as well as, uh, private investors. Through impact investing funds that have been raised twice by, um, with the support and help of Foundation for the Carolinas. We're not the lead funder, but many of our donors participate and so we've gotten involved. And the, the funding has been called the Housing Impact Fund. Um, it has been led by a developer in Charlotte known as Ascent, A S C E N T Capital. Man named Mark Etheridge and the, their, their premise on affordable housing. Is to, um, to find and re- re- refurbish. What they call naturally occurring affordable housing, N O H A, N O A H, Noah, like Noah's Ark. Naturally occurring affordable housing. So these are apartment complexes and townhomes and other kinds of. Um, existing dwellings inside city limits that are then outfitted at a far less cost than new construction can possibly develop. And that then are, um, funded so that the, um, that the targeted. Population for these units. And I don't know really how many are, um, owned units versus rented units. But I will say that they target specific numbers of thirty percent AMI as well as fifty percent AMI. Before they get to the eighty percent AMI. And so. I, I just put that out there as a different methodology for kind of aggregating what of other monies Durham may have. Relative to, um, resolving this very intractable question, um, to think about ways that. Um, you know, our corporate citizens here in the Research Triangle Park and our philanthropic citizens here in the Research Triangle Park could. Participate in something like that, um, if the development community had an appetite to, to develop these, um, these, these properties. I will say that Atrium Health, which I think is the equivalent to our Duke Health, um, in Charlotte. Um, they actually have, um, on sta- onsite resident onsite in these properties, healthcare professionals. To make sure that these folks not only have housing, but they also have access to healthcare. So. I do think there are other models and maybe this is not the forum to promote other models. And again, I'm not an expert, but I, I do think, I do think there is some other innovative strategies for this. And, and I'm grateful for all the expertise in the room. Thanks so much, Deidreana.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Barefoot. I, I definitely think this is the forum for that type of conversation. And I would throw in probably a few more models that, um, have come up. I know I had hoped to have someone speaking to us about equitable economic develop, well, equitable development. And also, um, incremental development. And so I'm gonna try and reach out to have, um, some information at least available. I know I did get a policy briefing from Local Progress on equitable economic development. And I know Policy Link has, um, quite a bit of information available. I, I know, I also want to throw in, um, from the book study standpoint, I, I had a chance to read. Rewatch the, um, Urban Alchemy Restoring Joy and America's Sorted Out Cities. Um, Dr. Mindy Fuller Lovely's, uh, Connected, Connected Cities kind of conversation around, um. The book study that happened in our city over seven years ago and where, from where we are, from where we were then to where we are now. You can see how, you know, planned obsolescence and planned shrinkage is having impact even with gentrification. And all of the things that are occurring with our market, our housing market naturally. And so just figuring out what it could, what could be possible around policy. I am, I think this is most of what this conversation is about, where the mayor, my, uh, myself and Dr. Hyman are trying to bring forward. Um, to our council, some actual policy changes that could be made. Um, I'll add that it's not lost on me that the color of law, a forgotten history of how our government straight segregated America. Um, came out in twenty twenty seven, in twenty seventeen. And we're almost at twenty twenty seven. And I don't know that there's been very much more made of, you know, what could be done beyond the one acre lots. You know, single family homes. So we did a how, you know, expanded housing choices. And even with those text amendments being proposed, I don't know that it'll actually get to the kind of zoning changes we need to see. Um, that would actually open up our city so that we have more connection. And our local developers and our local, like local lenders and realtors.
Yeah.
Actually get to the point where we're bringing more homeownership and rental, um, to residents of this community before they're all lost. So I appreciate your comments. And I know that. I see Sherri Zan Rosenthal has raised her hand. I do want to share that we will be wrapping up in about seven more minutes. And so, um, if you do have comments or questions, please raise your hands so that I can get you in the queue. And then we can wrap this all up and try to come back together in a month and see where we are.
I guess you're waiting for me, so I'll, I'll move ahead. I, I want to piggyback on Ms. Barefoot's comment, so I really appreciate you calling on me. I would commend to the council and to the staff to take a look at the projects that Jim Pugh, P O U. Did. And there was in particular a project off James Street that did what Ms. Uh, Barefoot is pointing toward, which is that it was a clustered development. Uh, in which the apartments that were low and community scale fit in nicely in a little infill site. Um, and they were all designed so that they would be easily served by shared services. So that you could have one person come in, for example, and help clean homes or deliver meals or do other things of that kind. Um, so that it was a very low cost assisted services model. And Jim's other projects are worth taking a look at too, because he went in. And renovated apartment buildings in exactly the way that Ms. Barefoot is talking about. And it's an indigenous Durham model that we already have for things that we've done in the past and we know are very doable. And one of the problems of SCAD, I know this isn't primarily about SCAD, is particularly that the. Most affordable, the naturally occurring affordable houses that tend to be on corners. Because they have slightly larger lots are the ones that are particularly being demolished and torn down. The builders slash developers buying that house at a price less usually. Than each of the three to four resulting small tiny lot houses is then selling for. And so we are losing Durham's architectural heritage and also losing our affordable housing stock that's naturally occurring. Paradoxically, because of these small lot developments. And so that's another reason that's already happening under EHC. Uh, and also because they take, they, they happen as of right and there's no site planning or other things. We're having problems with stormwater services. Uh, I won't go into the rest of it, except to say that this, this point about naturally occurring affordable housing. Is particularly important at a time when new construction is extremely expensive. Framing lumber with what's going on with the boring beetles over in Canada. This is all climate change in action, also affecting making new construction out of the reach of most people.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I, I can appreciate that this, I, I know that the. The context of those text amendments are at the forefront of our, you know. Newspaper and everything else that's going on. And so I, I fully expect for those comments to come in to this meeting. And I want to figure out how we can use some of that to, to make sure we're shaping what's happening with our community development program. Um, and our current housing bond. And so what we can gather from that, I'm sure that staff. Has been listening and they will follow up and continue to keep asking, asking the. I'm gonna ask that you continue to keep asking the questions and making a statement, sharing the policy, um, examples. And the brief or briefing resources. And so we can all just put it in one place. Um, I'm asking Amber. To support me and, and the mayor and, and Dr. Hyman and collecting that so that we can share it up, share it back out with folks. Um, as I know, people do share a lot through email. Uh, it's often like the most helpful thing. Um, in trying to make decisions for our city is to get the feedback from you all. And so I thank you all for taking the time today. And we have about three more minutes. I don't see any additional hands up. I do want to make sure, give another chance for folks. Raise their hands and share any insights or questions. Um, but I do, I do want to say I, I thank you all. Uh, and that's, I see a, a re- a real hand.
Sorry, I was trying to find the, the button to click on. I'll be really quick. Um, I sit on the property management committee for DRAR. Um, been the chairman there in the past years, but, um, speaking on behalf. And that's my specialty and focus in real estate is property management. But I wouldn't, I would like to see going forward. Um, all the talk about home, homeownership, the way to get there is typically through renting a home first, um. To put a roof over your head. So I think that needs to enter the conversation and I have, um. Uh, a lot of voices behind me from other property managers in Durham. Um, and we all kind of have the same sentiment of what's going on and what's causing. Applications to have to be stronger to where we used to be giving a, give more tenants a chance. Um, at renting and why rent costs are going up. And would like to possibly bring that to the table to the next meeting.
I appreciate that. I think that it's naturally occurring that this was more of a homeownership conversation. I'm sure the Durham Housing Authority is speaking about their rental units.
Right.
And some of them homeownership opportunities that it will, it will lend to that. And so I'll make sure to, to specifically add that as an agenda, you know, slot to just specifically speak to property management and rental.
Oh, thank you.
That feedback. And I see Dr. Hyman with her hand up.
Yes. So I just wanted to make a closing comment. I'm very solution focused. So in terms of us moving forward. Can we just have Councilmember Freeman, like a list of maybe three, three areas that we're gonna follow back up on for the next meeting? So that we're not, because this has been a lot of good information, but okay, the next steps, which is what I think this is all, uh, about too, just. If I make sense. Thank you.
Yes, you do. Uh, and thank you for making sure we, we line it up so that it's clear for folks and, uh, folks on the line. On the line and, and watching the recording. So we'll, we'll touch back in. The mayor will be leading the next session. I'm only filling in. Um, but I assume that we're going in this rental direction with the Durham Housing Authority. And then also speaking to their homeownership option from exactly what Mr. Cherry mentioned. Being able to move from rental to homeownership. And so that'll be the main part of the, the, the brief update. We'll probably, I'll probably open again with sharing, you know, just a little bit of background so that folks understand that they're only seeing this one. The second video, you know, just what we've been going through with the housing deep dive and how this ties into that. Because the, those questions that were raised and then just the update from the housing authority. And I'm hoping that we get Ms. Anita, um, why, I don't want to say her, mess up her last, I think it's Jones. Um, and from the housing authorities, speak specifically about what's been going on. I do know that they have similar, similar shortage situation happening with their staff. And I always want to offer grace and, and that because we know that that can create a lot of hardships for people who are. Who are trying to get the work done with fewer people and, and not less of an issue, more of an issue. And so I, I think that those two, two, two main things will happen. If I can manage to find, um, a presenter to share about the equitable development. I will try to squeeze that in for like a brief ten to fifteen minute presentation. And then outside of that, we can have. And then outside of that, we can have open dialogue like we're having today. And again, for the third meeting, I intend for it to kind of give like a, oh, an open primer. And then kind of similarly, this discussion, the mayor has allowed me to to kind of frame what the the meetings would look like. Um, so I I did ask Amber to like line those up, so we are good. And I think this, this meeting, I had hoped to have a presentation today. We did not, but it's okay. So we'll keep moving. Does that help, Dr. Hyman?
Yes, so because we have documented what's our next steps. Yeah, thank you.
And I will say that out of it, I'm hopeful that that um that Reginald Johnson has the res, has has some resource information for, from, from his, for his programs as well as um Anthony Scott for his program. And just, just some, a kind of a of funnel to say like, here's some, here's some resources, use what you need to and to keep the conversation open and going as much as possible because I do appreciate when a community organizing group comes together and spends as much time as they do or, you know, just, just setting up committees and and going through the the city's programs to figure out how to be supportive. I want to honor that and lift it up for uh reflection. And so I thank you all again for being here. I am going to close this out and I'm looking around and just checking. I don't see any hands. And I thank each and every one of the attendees. I especially thank Durham Realtors Association for uh pushing us to have this conversation as the stakeholders in our community who are sitting in that professional seat. And I really want to appreciate our staff for um sticking with us through this to make sure we're not um misinformed or at least have more information than than less. So I thank you all and have a great, wonderful day and I hope you have a wonderful weekend as well.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day.